All right, we will call to order this regular meeting of the Spirit Funding Commission for May 1st, 2012. For those who want to call the roll, please.
Sure. Chairperson Jennifer Crick.
Here.
Vice Chairperson Chris Dastater.
Here.
Commissioners Joan Eaton, Ian Elversen.
Here.
Paulson.
Here.
Wallace Harden, Karen Baumkohl.
Here.
Michelle Rittmacher.
Tom Berth.
Present.
Hunter Craig Fox.
Item three on the agenda tonight is public comments on consent agenda and non-agenda items. It would be anyone's opportunity to come forth and address the commission on consent agenda or non-agenda items. Seeing none, we will move on to item four, the consent agenda. Item is the minutes of April 3, 2012. Entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. Make a motion.
Motion.
Commissioner Elversen.
Sorry.
And Commissioner Paulson the second. Any discussion? No? All in favor? And one abstention, Commissioner Dastater. Otherwise, you name them. All right, moving on. That concludes item four on the agenda. Item five is a public hearing and recommendation of the Town Nine Park Enhancement Project. And we will open the public hearing. Phil's fifth proof of publication.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Does the applicant have a presentation? Is that either the town or...I guess it's the town, right?
I'll understand.
You want a few words? Okay.
I won't be doing much of the talking. Tonight, we have a presentation from Martin Toph, who is the superintendent of Public Works and Parks for the town. And he and the Parks Recreation Open Space Trails Advisory Committee have worked very diligently to put together a plan for improvements to what is known as the Town Nine property, which is south of the Marketplace, north of the original Superior. So with that, and the idea is that this is a major public improvement, so the planning commission is to review this and make a recommendation to the board and trustees. So, Martin, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Fox. Again, Martin Toph, Town Staff. It's great to be here tonight. And as Fred mentioned, it's a Town Park, or Town Nine facility is a park facility just west of here, south of the Marketplace. For anybody who's not familiar with it, it's the primary recreation facility, really the only park other than Children's Park in Original Town. And as most of the folks in this room are aware of, this site, this park site, has been the subject of various discussions about how to really improve the park, improve this facility that's been here, really since the Marketplace opened a little over a decade ago. The Town has the Parks Recreation Open Space and Trails Advisory Committee, often referred to as Pro-Stack, that has looked at this project over the years as a part of the committee's annual budget process to develop a recommendation for the board. And the committee really started focusing work on this particular project, working with staff on this latest initiative to put together a recommendation for what you'll see tonight as part of this presentation, a little over maybe two years ago during 2010 to look at potential improvements for this site. Last year, as part of Pro-Stack's annual work plan, the committee coordinated with staff and a consultant team to lead a very thorough community engagement process, which we'll come back to tonight. It'll be the slide that's behind us right now. The chair of Pro-Stack, Jim Payne, is here tonight to show a little bit, or share a little bit about how that process went and was included. To cut ahead to the chase a little bit, the goal of that engagement process was to develop a consensus-based plan for improvements at Town Nine Park. And thanks in large part to many residents of Original Town who participated in the process by either showing up here in person for meetings or leaving feedback on forms that we left out here in Town Hall in the lobby area, and also sending emails to me and other staff members here who are also participating in an online survey, a lot of feedback was received and was able to be incorporated in order to develop a largely consensus-based plan for the improvements that you'll see tonight. What ended up being created was a site master plan and a budget estimate that were presented last year to the Town Board to consider as part of the 2012 budget process. That project did end up being included in the 2012 budget. So since then, since the beginning of the year, Pro-Stack and staff have worked with a consultant team from a very well-regarded firm, Design Concepts out of Lafayette, to develop a final recommended design for the Town Nine Park Enhancement Project. Shannon Weber is the principal of Design Concepts. She's here tonight. She's led this design process, really since the kind of bubble diagram exercise that we went through last summer. She'll go over the design components of the plan with the commission here in a moment. But before I hand this off, I'll just touch briefly on timeline. So after this commission has a chance to review this project, we're scheduled to make a presentation before the Town Board on May 14th to go over the design with the Town Board members then. And then after that, construction drawings will be finalized over the next couple of weeks for posting for construction bid solicitation by the end of the month. And a construction contract is scheduled to come before the Board, Town Board, for consideration of approval in June. And then construction is scheduled to start in July. It's not a huge project. It shouldn't take more than a couple of months. It should be done by September. The elements that you'll see aren't particularly complex, but it'll have some ordering and some different materials that'll need to take a few weeks in order to get all ready. So with that, I'll introduce Pro-Stack Chair Jim Payne. He'll review the community engagement process that the committee spearheaded last year. And then Shannon Weber will go over the design and any of the details. So feel free to interject with any questions you might have.
Thanks.
Good evening, Commissioners. Fred, Jim Payne, Chair of Pro-Stack. I'm just going to give you a brief highlight, and I won't even go through all the detail because I don't think you need it, but because this was a...the major issue we had to address and certify for the Board and for our own purposes was the nature of this park. Was it exactly what kind of park was it to be? It has been in the comprehensive plan and the Pro-St master plan for, what, six, seven years now, as essentially a neighborhood park, and we reaffirmed that. We just wanted to make sure everybody was on the same page. The Board certainly was, and Pro-Stack agreed, and the community was very insistent that this would be a neighborhood park. So once that decision was made, things followed from that pretty naturally. And that also enabled us to do very intensive outreach to the Sagamore and Original Town neighborhoods, a lot easier than going to the entire town. So we had multiple points of contact, community meetings, going back to January, and this is last year, this is January of 2011 when this began. And for example, in the February 23rd meeting, we actually went door-to-door through Original Town and Superior members of Pro-Stack, even some of the members of the Town Board, to talk this up and to get people's input and to encourage them to come to the meetings. We had postcards. We had realtor boxes throughout the northern neighborhoods with flyers. We use the electronic media of the town, and of course, the website and the newsletters. So it was pretty intensive, probably the most intensive outreach that's been done for this kind of thing, to make sure that everybody was aware of what we were doing and we got the most impact, the most input we could get. So we had various points, I lost count, but there were very, very many points of contact with the Board through work sessions mostly. Many, if not most, of the Board attended many of these meetings, so there was a close involvement from the Board all the way through. It wasn't something that was presented to them at the end of the line as a recommendation. They were, many of them were very well aware of the process and attended many of the meetings. And that reflects the intense interest, I think, that the Board had in this particular project and the desire to get it right. So the major points that I'll leave with you from this process was that it was reaffirmed to be a neighborhood park, meaning that, not a community park, meaning that the primary input was to come from the neighbors in the surrounding, in the northern neighborhoods, even though, of course, all meetings were open and everyone was encouraged to come from throughout the town. And we did get input from other parts of the town. It's to remain non-programmed. That had been the policy, and that is currently the assumption, meaning that any facilities, amenities, fields in the Town Nine would be not programmed officially. And a general agreement that the western part of the rectangle, if you will, would remain the active part, and the eastern part that really intrudes into neighborhoods and closer to housing would remain passive. And then also, as a neighborhood park, it would have to have certain key ingredients that you would expect, such as teen amenities, fields, paths, playgrounds, and that sort of dictated that whole process of looking at those various elements. And the only other thing there is that, out of the community meetings and from members of the Board, there was a strong direction to maintain some element of a quality youth baseball facility in the equation. So there were a lot of time we spent on that, a lot of discussion. If there was one element that was most thoroughly debated throughout the process, it was the nature of that. So what you'll see today, as far as the baseball element that's in the multipurpose field part of the equation, reflects that extensive community input and discussion with the Board and with Pro-Stack. So this year, the Board approved this, gave us a head nod in last August on the design plan, which was Design Concepts Planning and also Green Play, who we've used in this town for many years, also worked with Design Concepts and was a facilitator at the public meetings. And that was last August, pending budget. They went through the budget process, so we went through all of that, and $700,000 was designated in the budget to essentially fund what we had tentatively agreed on with the Board, and tentatively, I won't say approved, but had liked in August. And from January until now, we've been in the process this year of that final design. We've had more community meetings, and the last community meeting was last week, where I think we had very enthusiastic response to what Design Concepts had to present. So if you have any questions for me on the process, I'll take them now, but otherwise, I'll turn it over to Shannon Weber for the presentation. Thank you.
Okay, like, can you guys hear me okay? Yeah?
Yeah. If you could just go ahead and introduce yourself one more time.
Oh, I'm sorry. Shannon Weber with Design Concepts.
Thank you.
Landscape Architect. So for Town Nine, as Jim and Martin explained, this is the 2012 Recommendation Master Plan. Just to give you a rundown basically of what we're going to include, we have the existing park area. Let me switch that.
Can you push the button on the top?
Is it the top one?
The other direction. Go with the little button on, try to slide it the other direction.
There's both.
Tag your book back, too.
Yeah, there we go. Thanks, Martin. You'd be kind of used to it by now, right? Anyhow, this is the existing playground that you guys have out there right now, or play apparatus, I'll call it, and the play pit and the walk that comes around the street. What we are going to do is we're designing, we're expanding that whole play area, and we are going to put a play pit, or play area, in this upper portion, and then it separates with a little bit of turf and landscape, and then we have a larger turf area that will include more play pieces. So really, what we're doing is we're expanding what you guys have right now and making it a little bit more interesting in terms of play value. It terraces down, so obviously, this is our highest point, so everything on the site is sloping down, and we're working with the existing conditions out there, is what we're doing. And we're creating these play areas down below. So if you can envision it, you know, from a section, this is the highest point coming down. And then, of course, the basketball court, we're putting in a full-size basketball court. And over here is a large 20-by-20 shelter, picnic shelter or shade shelter that we're putting in, with a walk that comes off of this side of the street. And then down here, we have a teen activity area, and I'll show you more detail of what that includes here in just a minute. And along the ball field area, we're going to put in a permanent full-size backstop, as well as we're going to skin some running paths. I was going to make sense, the running, yeah, the running paths, I guess, to the bases. So I'll show you a little bit more detail about that as well. The plan also includes a Crusher Finds walk, and the upper portion is in the shape of the kite trail. As a part of the full master plan, the kite trail, of course, is historically at the town of Superior. So that's where this alignment is coming from. And we intend to do some interpretive presentation of it, I guess is the best way to say it, and I'll explain to that to you a little bit more. Horseshoe pits will go in down here, Crusher Finds trail again right here. Everything along this walk stays the same. We're not changing this walk. It's going to stay the same. The only thing we want to add in this walk is some distant markers to tell you how far you're going if you're running or walking around the park. So right now, it's a little over a half-mile all the way around, so we're going to determine what we want to put in for distances, and then we're going to have that as the ground plane along this walk for easy maintenance, all the way around there. The existing restroom is right here in landscape. We're not changing anything there. We left the existing walk and drive right through here. And then there is a slack line that's going in right here. It's kind of hard to see on this drawing, but it goes in right here. So everybody know what a slack line is? Cool. So I think that's going to be something that's going to be really fun to do. So with that, we'll go into a little bit more detail. You guys got the set of drawings that we're working on right now. What I did is we just put together the areas that I think will be the most interest to you guys in terms of what we're doing, is the core areas that we just talked about. So this is the play area that I was describing before. It's a blow-up, and again, this is your play apparatus and your existing walk that goes around with your pit. We have, again, this walk that gets you on the upper terrace, I'll call it, and then there's a walk that goes all the way down and around here with the play pit in this spot, and another play pit here with play apparatuses. And so we'll go into detail a little bit more about what these pieces are going to be, but you can start to see how they lay out in the play pits and how many pieces we can get in each play pit. We also have to make it handicap accessible, these playgrounds, so we have to include a concrete ramp here and right here, and then we will have to add one here, up here at your existing play pit. There's benches on the inside of here, and along the backside, we are going to add some more benching along here, seating, I guess you'd call it, right here. This is all turf, as well as this turf area, so we want to get some areas where people could just sit on the slope, put out a blanket, you know, if they don't want to sit on a bench and just kind of watch the kids or play or whatever they want to do. On this side, I didn't really show this in the master plan, but this is an outdoor, it's a really small outdoor classroom is what we're calling it, and it's something that we wanted to include in the plan. GOCO, for GOCO Funding, it's one of those great things to include in your grant, and it's a really easy and fun thing to do. It works right, it works really nicely across from the shelter, which is right here, and then this trail gets you down to that teen area I was showing you earlier on the master And then, of course, like I said, walking down, this is the basketball court, and an alternate is to do this 10-by-10 shelter, let me go in later on. If you have any questions about that. So some of the play equipment, like Jim said, we've gone through the process, met with Pro-Stack three different times, gave them different options of play equipment that we thought would fit nicely with the theme of the park and with the play pieces that we know from our experience is really popular and do in design. So the upper pit, that north pit that I've shown you before, will include, it's called the EVOs, and we like this structure because it's a little bit different than your post and platform that you have up there right now. It's new in terms of architecture. It's not your traditional standard post and platform play piece, but there's a lot of different components in here, and it works anywhere from the ages of two all the way up to tweens or teens. Lots of upper body strength, as well as balancing. Again, it's a different kind of architecture, but it's meant to be that composite play that you see throughout. What we liked about it, too, is it really picked up on the radial pattern of our design. And a lot of what we're doing with this park is the theming of mining and the railroad, so we got some pieces, you know, in these areas really reminded us of the tracks of the railroad. So again, we're just trying to pull in and make it all come together. We want to include swings in that upper north area. We just have a tee post in here with a couple of different toddler swings. Spinners are really, really popular and don't take up a lot of space, not really expensive, but again, really popular, and of course, the balance beam. So those are the pieces we were able to get up there in that north area. On the south pit, the one at the bottom, lower, again, the bigger space, we're working with this piece here, what we wanted to do is think about mining and the different modes of doing mining. So bulldozer was one of the fun things that's already happened, we thought we'd bring in, great for that younger age group. We have arch swings, we get some swings in there again, then supernova, which is, again, very popular, spins, and it's a big balance piece. And then the other nice thing that we really wanted to do is include some climbing features. That was a request, a pretty strong request from the get-go, and these are rocks with ropes in between, and that will go in that bottom pit as well. A couple of things that we don't show on here that we were able to squeeze in on those voids is a couple of spring riders. You know, those are the things where the kids rock back and forth, really inexpensive, but just a couple more pieces we can get to that pit, so we're going to include those. So one of the things that we also heard a really strong interest in was the fitness course. And in our overall master plan, we talked about doing a fitness course on that outside trail that you guys have out there around the park right now. In our profession, we're finding that more and more of the fitness stations are becoming very popular to cluster them together. And so what we're doing is we're showing some different stations, I will call them, but we're not going to spread them out like you traditionally used to see. We're going to group them in one area, right up by the play area. And the whole idea is so that if you're a parent or not, if you want to be up there exercising, you can look down, look over the play area and see your kid playing, but maybe exercise at the same time. So we're going to have these grouped together in one area, and again, that's an alternate, but the distance stations around the path will be part of the base bid. These are examples of the town's standards for furniture out there. This is the picnic table, the benches, the grills, and the trash receptacles. I'd just like to keep those included in the presentation so everybody's aware of what we're going to put in there for that. The shelter, the big shelter you saw is the bottom part of the plan. We're going to go with this one, this model, it's called the Northwest. And we're going to do a little bit of customizing to it, and you can see that in our plans, or actually, you'll see it in here, I'm sorry. But what we want to do is do the stone columns and pick up on the red flagstone that this building here has in front, and really carry through a lot of the characteristics architecturally from this building out to here. And then, of course, we were trying to pick up on something that really lent itself to the mining theme as much as we could with a pre-manufactured piece, a shelter. The ball field, as Jim explained, this is going to be a full-size backstop, and I have some details in here to kind of show you what we're going to do to make that unique to Town Nine. We've also put in, like I said, a running path, running base paths for Little League and for...
T-ball.
T-ball, thank you. My blank. For T-ball bases and Little League. So this is giving you a skinned running path for both of those, the distances for both of those running paths, as well as the pitcher's mound. These are the existing boulders that are out there right now. So this backstop that I was talking to you a little bit about, we'd really like to customize it and make it unique to Town Nine. It's a little hard to see in this, but we'll scoot over here in a minute. But we're picking up on the name of the field up here at the top, and then we're, Martin, if you can go to the right for me a little bit, thank you. That is the name of the field that we want to put at the top of the backstop. Cup, Kup, Kupner?
Kupner.
Thank you, Kupner Field. And then we want to pick up on some mining icons or images and really customize the top of that backstop all the way across here. And then those images are going to be picked up throughout the entire design of the park. So that's how we're bringing the whole theming and the concept and the ideas together from the very west end to the east end of the park. Okay, the teen area, the teen activity area, we've done a couple of different reiterations here, got lots of great input in terms of what we want to see out there. Teens are a tough age to try and satisfy, but with the location of this, what we are proposing to do is this trail really kind of connects to that shelter I was showing you a little bit earlier on the master plan. There's a walk that goes from that shelter and brings you all the way down to the teen area, and this is off the walk that's existing right now. So I'll start down here at the bottom. This is the Crusher Finds shoulder that's out there right now. So we're going to do a Crusher Finds path, I will call it, and this is where we're going to put in a couple of fitness stations that I've shown you earlier, knowing that with teens, especially boys, you have push-ups and pull-ups and chin-ups and all that is really popular, just a couple of pieces on this bottom portion. It steps up with the grade, and then here, along this edge and this edge here, we have a couple of seat walls that will also act as a skateboard rail. So we brought this walk all the way down here so you can get enough run to be able to skate on these and then come back down again. So that's why the walk is long and linear and straight, so we can get that. And then in this plan, we're proposing a ping-pong table. You can do a concrete ping-pong table and put it out to the site. Again, thinking about that age group and what would interest them. And we put in some boulders for seating along the top edge. There'll be some landscape all the way around with trees for shade, so we can shade as much as we can. A lot with that, that teenage, as you all may know, with kids who are teenagers, it's all about being with your friends and hanging out. That's a big part of what they like to do, socialize, so that's what this area is for. And then we heard that a climbing wall was of big interest that they would love to see out there, and challenging for that age group. So this walk terminates at a play pit. Again, we have to have that for safety purposes, and then having a climbing boulder is the concept for the very end of that teen area. So theming is an area that we're working on right now. Happened for a little while, but we're starting to put it all together, and it's still evolving. This is just simply conceptual right now, but we're starting to get our images together, some concepts together. But back at our play area, which of course is the core of your park, we really want to pick up on the different walks that I talked about and pick up on themes that are relevant to this area and the history that happened in the Superior area. So I'll start up here at the top. This outdoor classroom that I was talking to you a little bit about, there's been remnants of Native American stone rings found in this area, looking back again and doing our research on the history, so we thought it would be great to include a flame. You can sandblast the flame in the center of this outdoor classroom, and then some of these images will be sandblasted on the stones. So keeping it very simple, but tying it into the history of the site. So that is right here. And then picking up on the ranchers, we call it the Ranchers Loop. So that loop is all the way around here, and again, we're playing with these images, putting some, we've done a little bit of research on the farms and the homesteads and the crops that were grown out here, so we'll pick up on that on this loop here. The railroad loop will be on this upper portion, and again, we're looking at the different types of, just the engines and the different cars that were used. And then we've talked a little bit, we may pull in this, this is right now shown, the railroad loop, but we may pull in the environmental aspect of this area, like the wildlife and plant material and that sort of thing, so we're going to bring that on this loop. And then the last thing is the miner's loop is here, and again, we're picking up on some of those icons that I just described earlier on the ball field backstop. So that information, we're beginning to tie it in all together, again, picking up on the history of Superior and the site. And then down at the bottom where the shelter is, the industrial mine camp, and some different images we started to put together, we started doing more research in how that all lays out and how we want to incorporate it into that shelter. Right here is the kite trail map, because this is the beginning of that kite trail that goes across the site over into here, we thought it'd be great to show the layout of the kite trail so that you understand why it's in the alignment that it is. So we saw that anyways. The shelter, I was talking to you a little bit about that. This is how we want to customize, and we've got some ideas, again, picking up on those icons that we described or showed you a little bit earlier on the backstop, repeating that here, doing whatever we can to make it customized again for Town Nine Park. Things like the abstract... Things like the abstract coal beds, how we can tie that into the base underneath the shelter again. We may actually do in a little bit, it's been a week now since we showed this the first time, so we may pull this out from underneath it here a little bit and do it on outskirts. But then this interpreted signage, a very natural stone. It's just sandblasted with a little bit of history and tells the story of the different loops and why we did what we did. So as you come to the park, we may start here. Really, it really ties it all together of why we did what we did and how our things went down. And then lastly, the kite trail is at the northern portion, again, that I showed you earlier, where we have the map, actually, I sandblasted over here. But we wanted to somehow, I guess, just educate the user. And so some ideas that we had, again, an inspiration is to do metal art in the form of the rancher and the cattle and the horses. And then also the train, the railroad that came through this and do some metal. Thought it'd be great if we could do full-size, but we're not getting pricing right now. Let's see if that's even simple we can do. But we thought it'd be a great thing if it, you know, just think about driving by that park and looking over and seeing that silhouette. I think it would be a very cool one.
Where does the term kite trail come from?
I love it.
It was the railroad.
I did.
The shape of the, shape of the line. So if you look at this, you see a kite.
Oh, yeah.
And the train coming down.
And then also, we want to pick up on a couple of key areas, of course, along that trail where the train stopped. We know Superior's not right here, it's actually down here a little bit farther. So we intend to have wayfinding, I guess is a good way to put it, where you have an arrow that tells you how many miles to Superior. So we're working out that concept a little bit more, but those are some ideas that we have on the kite trail. Real simple, again, but just to help people understand why we did what we did and the layout, how it all ties together with the history of the park. Okay. So that's the design for Town Nine. Any questions?
Yeah, Jack, that's our next, that's our next section of the public hearing. Does any member of the commission have questions at the applicant?
First off, I'm just thrilled, and you know my son is thrilled.
Yes.
Excited about this happening and coming forward. I think you guys have done an amazing job. Prostex done a great job making this a neighborhood park and not overwhelming it with too much. It's a nice balance. And a couple, just a couple of comments and a few questions. You didn't mention budget constraints as you did in the, in the community meeting. Are we assuming we can do all of this now at this point? Or has that changed since the community meeting?
No, right now, what we did is at the DD level, design development level, with the Taylor process, and so we kept track of it as we're going. It's still evolving, so things will shift and change a little bit as we go. But our goal is to stay at that $700,000. So right now, what we're showing you are conceptual ideas. And we're getting pricing right now and making sure that it's all within the budget. And if we can't do it, we'll have to look at ways of either sizing down, might be a good way of putting it. Now, this is a really good example. If these come in way too expensive, you know, it's just out of the question. We're going to have to look at other ways of accomplishing what we want to accomplish within the budget. So we're working, I mean, it's working with us side by side, I guess, simultaneously. We're doing design and working on the budget as we go and keeping track of it as much as we can.
And the reason I ask is that that teen area, I just feel like without that rock is going to be pretty heavily lacking. And so since you had mentioned that that was potentially an alternate piece in the community meeting, I want, I want to emphasize and let the planning commission know that that was an alternate piece that might get added and $65,000 or something for that piece.
Are some of those things contingent upon the GOCO grant?
No, it's the, that's, while I don't know, I don't know what they're going to, if they get the GOCO. I think the budget's 700 and the way they're saying they'd like to have the GOCO grant offset that, whether we could encourage them to bump it if we, you know, to get some of these alternate pieces depending how it goes. I just wanted to bring that up because I knew that was an alternate piece. And I think it's a pretty important piece for that, for that area of the park. So is there any consideration to the tree, any tree and shade clusters on the west end of the park? And maybe specifically around the horseshoe pit or anything else? It's pretty open down there.
East end.
Or east, I'm sorry, did I say west? Yeah, east end, I'm sorry, east end of the park. I wrote west.
Down here?
Correct, yeah.
We have, you know, there's existing trees down here now. So they're along this edge. And yeah, and we intend to, in the master plan, we have mortgage station in through this area. The way budget sits right now, this is what we can, we can afford to do at this point in time.
Okay, okay. And you'll, and so that was my other question. Your intention is to leave the row of elms that border the trail along the south end?
We do, yeah. I would recommend leaving those. We know that they're elms and they're dying now. But when I was in, with the help of Alan, we talked about it quite a bit. Planting along there, so when those trees do die out, there's something to replace them. It'd be a good idea, so.
Okay.
Down the road.
And then my last question is, with the development of the Remington Homes development and the straightening of Coal Creek Drive, has any thought been put to what's going to, how that's going to flow? How, when they straighten Coal Creek Drive, we end up with, I don't know, another 20 yards or so or 30 yards of park area along that strip? And how that's going to be handled? And see Martin moving around.
Again, Martin, to Town staff, so when Coal Creek Drive shifts over with the completion of Remington, the developer will be required to make the improvements along the roadway, including curb and gutter on Park Side. And asphalt that's out there now, I think we're planning on having become additional parking, some additional parking along the side of Coal Creek. Because if you know, if you've been here on the weekends or when there's a bunch of folks that are using the sports fields on the west side, there are oftentimes a lot of vehicles parked along Coal Creek and they'll head in, actually onto the parkway itself, onto the parkland itself. So it's, I think at the staff level, we've been planning to just increase the envelope to include some additional parking.
Just add one point. It's, you bring up a good point because when the... All right, well, when the, when the development eventually goes through, assuming it goes through, remember, it calls for a park.
You go, yeah, and he did the mic, sorry.
There it is, there it is. It calls for a park across Coal Creek. A park amenity in that development. So it would essentially be across from here. So you essentially have that extension across Coal Creek there. And as far as the trees, it's somewhat similar to what, what's gone on at what we now know as Autry Park. The actual trees weren't in the initial budget or plan, but it's part of the regular annual program. So you can see quite a number of trees have been added throughout the area, particularly in the dog park, that were not even in the original plan, so.
So that'll continue Arbor Day celebrations and things like that?
I really don't have any questions. I think everything was answered.
Okay.
My question's regarding the trail that's on the east part.
The new trail or the existing trail?
The kite trail, I guess, yes. Is that just bisecting open field area?
It is right now. Right now, this is an open area. And again, through, going through the different meetings that we went through, the infant meetings, that was an area that, they wanted to leave some open space for throwing the frisbee. Informal play, I guess, would be a good way of doing it, nothing programmed. But we wanted to get access from the center of the park over to the play area.
There's a fair amount of gray change there too, isn't there?
Yeah, the gray change.
Kind of west to east.
Yeah, it's a little flat. I mean, it's, it really is gradual right through here. It really starts to pick up probably from right here and moves this way, yeah.
The only question in my mind about that is if someone was going from point A to point B, I could see him maybe wanting to go down the trail one time for the cool factor, but for repetitive trips, they're going to cut across it. And I just, I think it's something that looks cool on paper.
From the sky?
From the sky. But, you know, will it really?
Be used that way?
Will it really perform as intended? Or will it just kind of be there, but be bisecting what could otherwise be
Just a good area.
More usable open area?
Well, we do have plans to put some benches and some seating along here. So again, it's, you know, it's passive, I guess, is the best way of putting it. And we kept that in mind through the design. Also, in the alternates, we have a couple of different alternates with this project. And those are extending and completing the kite trail. So you will get, you know, access from here down to here if we're able to afford it. It'll make a little bit more sense. But for the base bid, this is what we can put in. Yeah. But then, again, the whole idea is for just places to sit and walk. If, I guess if you're making a, you know, going straight across here, my hope would be that you would use the trails up here or down below.
I just think it's such an open area that people will kind of be going all different directions. I mean, I kind of agree with Bob in that that climbing piece, to me, would be very high on the list. But I know, I know that trail is not a very pricey piece. But to me, if I was, if I was ranking things, I would rank that towards lower just because people will be coming from every different direction and not using the trails for the most part, I would think.
I can add, I mean, make a point there, it's a good point. The crusher fine trails that could be added there are not insignificant. There's cost, but we add them all the time through, throughout the town. So that's something that could be done, you know, if the demand is there. But I also think it's important, when you look at this, it's hard to, to keep this in mind. This is really a very narrow park. So you're right, people will always try to cut corners. But it's not a huge open area. It's a fairly narrow piece of land. So you're really not asking people to go way out of their way. But you're right, you're going to get that. And that would probably indicate social trails that we may need to eventually turn into real trails.
I have a question.
Sure.
I'm not understanding the purpose of the ballpark.
Okay.
I mean, I, we're putting money in a backstop and a fence and maintaining baselines, but nothing programmed. We're not putting in benches behind the backstop? I mean, even, even, I coached Little League for eight years from before T-ball to organize competitive baseball. Without a bench, I mean, to put your glove on, to put anything on, that doesn't make sense to me. To have a backstop and spend town money maintaining a field that has no program doesn't make sense to me. So I don't understand the baseball field at all.
I understand it from the concept of, well, we're not asking, I guess we're not commenting at the moment. So I'll hold my comment, sorry.
Yeah, I mean, that's been the most discussed and debated aspect of this. I mean, there's a strong element within the neighborhoods that very much wants to see a baseball element in this park. It goes back to the history of the days when there was a ball field in what is now Asti Historical Park. It was a strong direction that we find some way to incorporate youth ball into the multipurpose field. So the way I look at it, I mean, the way I describe it, is that we're really, we're really maintaining and allowing for a baseball element, a baseball capacity in a multipurpose field. So it's not truly a baseball field in that regard. It's not, there's not enough land here. There's not enough infrastructure and parking and all of those things to really allow it to be a true competitive field that would have scheduled play. And if we were to do that, the solution best lies outside of Town Nine. You know, their field's planned for across the road. We've looked at other locations, we're always address, trying to address that issue. But it'll be a place where a parent and child or a couple of kids or can go and play pickup ball or practice, throw, you know, you know, dad pitching to his son or daughter, softball, baseball, kids playing, you know, that kind of thing. And it's meant to be there for that purpose. So think of it as a multipurpose field with a baseball element. We have no pretension that that's truly a baseball field in every sense of the term that a Little League team would want to play on. But it will be good quality, well-maintained, as we do with everything in this town. You know, a nice, safe backstop, because it is sort of close to the, to the road as it exists now. And it, and it's there now. So we're just, we're just really upgrading what's there a little bit.
What I don't, I don't understand why there isn't a compromise. I mean, I coached kids when they were spending more time picking daisies out of the grass than they were paying attention to where the ball was going. That kind of element doesn't need much at all. And they're not going to hit foul balls over the backstop because the backstop's not big enough. T-ball, you know, even machine pitch, which is the next stage, they're not going to hit the ball out of 200-foot park. It's, it's not going to happen. So, I mean, when I coached little, little kids, everybody had to pack with their parents a car and drive to Lewisville. They still do today because we don't have the fields for them. So I don't understand why there can't be an element for beginning baseball. I understand we're not putting in a baseball field for older kids. We're not programming it for different things. But to have a field that had the elements that could be used for even practice. A team just shows up on a Saturday and they say, hey, everybody just show up here and we'll, we'll use this field. I don't understand why we would go as far as we have and not go a slight step further and make it a usable field for our very small kids. Direct programs, the beginning Little League, it's, you know, they're barely even hitting the ball. They don't hit it out of the infield, but three times a game.
Sure.
So from, from the community's perspective, we don't want that to get programmed. We really don't. We don't want it built in such a way that it'll eventually get programmed. We don't want it to be a programmed area. We want it to be a neighborhood park. We don't want it to be a community park element. So a lot of the feedback, a lot of the feelings, just of those of us who live there, are that, let's keep that simple, place to go, just play pickup ball and throw your bats and balls and your stuff on the sideline and sit there. I, we, we did comment on having a bench or two, but there are some physical restrictions based on the topography where the backstop is that they couldn't. But yeah, there's, there was some interest in putting a bench in. But making it anything more than a place to just go hang out, play unprogrammed, non-programmed baseball.
How many kids does it take to play unprogrammed baseball? Kids don't even know how to play over the line anymore, believe me. I coached competitive baseball kids and I said, hey, let's play over the line. They didn't know what the heck that was. It's like saying, you know, kids go out and they use concrete basketball courts anymore. They don't, they all expect to play inside. So I don't understand, I don't understand that spending the money to take it, maintain it. I have no problem with the backstop, but to put in baselines and maintain it like a baseball field, but then not allowing people to use it or not taking it to the next step of certain aspects, being able to use it, doesn't make sense to me. And then maintaining it and spending the money. I mean, just put it in the backstop and just let the grass grow then. Because that's all you need to do, what you're talking about. You just need grass. You don't need baselines and bases and maintenance and all this stuff.
So are you addressing it from a cost concern? I mean, it's, the consensus has been very strong from, from all sides, with a few exceptions, that, you know, what Bob just stated is that if, if we go any further, it's going to... The other issue is that at some point, it interferes with the use of this. This is now, essentially has become two multipurpose fields. Again, for pickup use, for practice, you know, teams use it for practice, soccer, all of them. And it's worked very well and it's heavily used. And we see that the baseball would be another multipurpose field use. But if we take it much further, then we, we run the risk of interfering with this use as a multipurpose field. And that's, right now, there's much greater demand for that than there is for that use as a ball field.
I guess, I guess the one, since we're, we are discussing this, I would just say that in developing a field that is, has the level of maintenance that you're talking about, to Craig's point, is that you are going to get teams that will show up there to practice, that are Little League teams or T-ball teams, that will drop in and do it just like the frisbee golf, or the frisbee, ultimate frisbee players did. And they will use it... And they will use it extensively. I'm sure that they will.
Right. And it'll have electric.
We're not going to, hopefully won't put boulders across the infield to, so that we're not going to use it. I mean,
That's fine. That's intended use, though. That's exactly, that's fine if, if.
But the issue with the Ultimate Frisbee was that, that teams were dominating the use of the field. And I think that you will find where the team, where the field maintained that way, that you're going to get a lot of baseball use out of it that's just basically free practice field.
That's fine. It's absolutely no different now than those times of the years when soccer teams are heavily using it for practice and pickup. We have a lot, we still have, in fact, we have a lot of Ultimate Frisbee use there, but instead of taking the whole field, they work in a quarter or one field. That's fine. I mean, we've, the capacity has increased. We're utilizing all of those different teams and sports and activities have a place on this field. Baseball will too. So if a baseball team shows up and, and uses that, they're every bit entitled to do that as entitled as any soccer, football, or anyone else.
I guess all I'm suggesting is that it may be contrary to the notion that you, you're going to have this, you know, sort of pickup-type field. It's going to be available a lot. I think it's going to be available even less than, or used more than maybe you envisioned, if that's really your intent. So that's just my.
I think, I think that during the season, that it probably will get used. I mean, I'm on, sitting on the Monarch Little League board now, and they are, I mean, to have a free place to actually go and practice is definitely attractive to them. So you're right, you're going to get some, you're going to get some pickup play there.
And so I don't understand how benches don't fit in with pickup play.
I think we'd all love to have benches. The issue is a structure. It has, can you speak to that? Because, yes, we agree, benches would be cool, but let, let me, let her tell you why we don't have benches. Or can't have benches.
Or budget.
See, if it's the building here, the toe of the slope, the gray drops down quite a bit right here, so we are maybe a foot away from the bottom of that slope. So to put a bench on this side definitely would not work. We have the option of doing it back here and back here, but we definitely don't have a bench here and definitely not dugouts.
Well, you wouldn't need a bench on two sides if you're not programming play, if you're not having games.
So that's an easy.
My intention, you know, coaching kids, you always have a kid that hurt his finger or something happened to him, or he doesn't feel well, and he says, can I go sit down? Yeah, go sit down wherever. No, okay, you sit on the bench, you don't get up from the bench. And that, that way the coach can keep track of the kid.
And there is.
Not to have any benches for them to put their equipment to go sit down, even, even, let's say, let's say a coach does go down there and just pick up the field. They haven't sit down and talked to them. I just, I don't see why there's zero bench. I'm not, I'm not arguing for program play. I understand where that has gone. I think it's a little bit of a not in my backyard syndrome, but I, I would think that there's room. It's not a high-dollar item. You're putting benches other where, other place for just random people to sit on. It seems like a more logical place to have at least a stretch of bench for some kids to sit on. And if you're playing program play or not program play, even a pickup game, you want some place for them to be behind the backstop. Not, not, you know, well, there's no place to sit out there, so they're sitting someplace else where they may get hit by a ball.
Yeah, no, that's an easy enough to do.
Can I ask a leading question? I mean, this is, gets to the root of the problem. There's a backstop that was existing there already. Is there any use in this park in the past with T-ball, Little League, anything going on with the existing backstop? Does anybody know?
Again, I'm a town staff. I have a chance to go out there a couple of times a week. I see people there regularly. I hear a lot on weekends and I see people using it for baseball. This past weekend, I saw probably a family, a couple of families playing. So yeah, I guess the answer is, or the question is whether or not it's used for baseball, the answer is yes.
Yeah, because I was just curious. I mean, I could see this ending up being a, a park that's heavily used as a T-ball, Little League park, or it could end up just sitting there with a backstop built to the Cuthbert Field.
Well, I think that was addressed, that there was, there's been a lot of conversation.
Well, I understand that, but I just.
About, about having a ball field in, in and around original town again. So there's.
The desire is there, is the use.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just telling you, it's a 60-foot base path. So it's, it's not a regulation field. That's what I was getting at.
It is for Little League.
It's for Little, Little guys.
Yeah, it's for Little guys. I mean, that's, to me, that's what you want to make it useful for.
A 60-foot base pad is a regulation-sized softball field.
Right.
So.
So I, I mean, I'm fine with it. It just, it bothers me that it's not really set up. To me, a few things lacking to make it really kind of work.
It does have power, right, by the way, to allow for pitching machine?
Yeah, it will. That's what we're going to, but we'll be including the cost estimate, so there'll be power over to here.
Yeah, that's great. That's always hard to find.
Yeah.
But no lighting.
No lighting at the ball field. There is lighting elsewhere in the park.
Yeah, but at the ball field. I picked up on that quick. That's, I guess night lighting gets expensive.
Two streetlights, you could probably get into dusk, you know. Tom, any other questions?
Yeah, I do. I have questions. I just wait my turn. I was concerned also about the basketball court. There's a push among a lot of land use planners to do whatever. It was kind of like the tennis court thing that went out at the window. And your opinions on that? I mean, a lot of people spent a lot of money ripping out tennis courts over 20 years ago. And is, is that really, you know, a full usable type situation, you think?
It is. Actually, basketball is great for the tween and teenage, especially. It's a great thing. I know it's over here, and over here, but we moved it over here so it could be visible and used for all age groups. But basketball still, it is pretty much even keel. It is still used all the time. And I don't, I can't remember one time I've ever turned it out a basketball court. I have overlaid a basketball court to improve it, but never torn it out. Now with tennis, that is definitely a trend, a trendy sport.
That's more.
So right now, we're seeing it back on the rise. You know, tennis courts are back on the rise. It's something that people want to see, communities want to see. So we do. That's more something that we pull out because of the space that it takes, but basketball never, you know.
Also, yeah, on that, you know, we took, there's only one real basketball court outside of the schools, which are not easy to use, in town. And that's at the east end of Community Park. And when Indiana was redone, there used to be a skate rink, line skate rink there. We upgraded that. So it's now a regulation, you know, good, good backstops and posts and everything's very, very well done. It's heavily used. I know, because I lived there and I look back over it. And it's not just basketball, though it gets a lot of basketball used from all ages. It's also a very popular place for, for parents to go with their kids, to teach them to ride bikes and all that sort of thing. So it's a very heavily, heavily used amenity, and I would expect that it would be here too.
Okay.
And what size is this court?
It's a full regulation court. We've also, one of the comments that came out of the community meeting last week was adding some element for a lower-height basket. So we've done some, we're looking at that to see if there's some way to add a, like a single basket pod off the side or on the side of the court with a lower basket. So that was one thing that came out of the community.
The slam dunk.
You're going to keep your rim straight if you're in there.
Yeah, we know.
I got a couple more questions. The metal art stuff, pretty, pretty looking silhouettes, art-like stuff?
Yeah, yeah.
You've got to find somebody that does that. That could be a pretty pricey little deal.
Yeah, and that's what we're checking too. We have a couple of different suppliers that we check. We do a lot of that kind of work actually.
That have done that?
So we're checking into pricing right now. As I mentioned before, we're going to kind of see when it comes in and see where, where we're at with it in budget. But even if we don't do it full-size, which would be cool, a very cool impact to have out there and a very, well, just a good impact. But we may take that same image and maybe it becomes smaller and maybe it's mounted onto something, but the concept is still there. So yes, to answer your question, we do a lot of cutouts.
The playground equipment, you're working with a couple of suppliers, I'm sure.
Yeah.
The more you cluster that, the more economies of scale you got. I could see that getting a little out of hand with about two or three different sources.
Right. You mean the play equipment itself? Yeah, and we are. We try to pick pieces where it was one or two suppliers. And unfortunately, there's some people, or some things, like the Supernova is a really good example. You know, it's really super popular. We know it's used in all the parks. The kids love it, but it's not something that one of the other suppliers that have a lot of pieces carries. So we're trying to keep it at a minimal as much as we can. I think right now we have two to three different suppliers. And lots of times too, we're not going to sole source this. It has to be something that comes in as an approved equal. So it's a matter of waiting to see what comes in at bedtime and how they can make it an approved equal, and then we can make the decision as to whether or not we can stay with one vendor or a couple vendors instead of doing several. But our goal is not to do that, no.
And the kite trail thing that's up there, it's in the middle of the east, east section's land. That's, so, so the, the true intention of this is to be a permanent thing.
Right. And it is a soft trail. It's a crusher fine trail.
Right, oh, it's a soft trail. That's why usually you do the soft trails. It's not necessarily thought of as a permanent solution.
I think too, a lot of us are running that area, and it's kind of a neat addition, just to have something different if you're not into going out in the long trail runs. A lot of people do run that park.
I mean, the concerns on keeping it more permanent would be, be like a standing curb edge type thing.
The crusher fines? Yeah. Again, I'm keeping in mind budget. Yeah, trying to keep it as small as we can. But you're right, that would be a more permanent way to deal with it.
Right.
Just one question for me, since I don't see them on the diagram. Are the Great Boulder Wall going through the multipurpose field staying in this redesign?
It is. Yes.
We're not worried that's going to interfere with the outfield of the ball field?
No. No, we're good. Yeah, we still have 200 feet.
You still have almost 200 feet at the, at the left field, left field extension. It's a little short, maybe 100, 180, 180 to 185 feet. As you get, the boulders go down there, so as you get to the outfield, it's more than 200 feet. And I think this comes down to about 185 feet, something like that. This field is essentially, the, the green area that you see is about, what do we say, 390 feet by about 65 yards, so about, by about 180, by, by 200 feet. So you'd still have a nice, comfortable outfield. And that's, boulders have been very effective in, in increasing the use of the field and solving the problems we're having.
Oh, I know, because my son practices soccer out there and doesn't have to fight with the Ultimate Frisbee teams anyway.
Yes, I have a question. I think you show on here waist baskets.
Trash receptacles, yeah.
What about for dogs? I see people with dogs out there all the time. Are there going to be stations for that, or is that going to be, you don't want them out there?
Yeah. Yeah, that's pretty much standard the way it is.
Okay.
We'll include them.
The, in relation to the planned Remington Homes development, I remember imagery from, from the approval, that, you know, the initial concept plans, things like that, of some sort of entry feature, maybe exiting their park and with some pedestrian crossing or something heading over to, to Town 9. If we contemplated that and how we've, the relationship of Town 9 to Remington and how that will play in the future, at all in terms of the connectivity of folks in that neighborhood?
Yeah, another question along the line. Do you have the ability to move the angle of that exit that goes south of Coal Creek Drive? Like, if we need to get, I mean, we, we'd want to cross that a crossing. We want these crosses. That's where we're going here.
Well, I want, yeah, I'm wondering about, did we, had we kind of planned that alignment sort of, right?
It's either at a street, there's two streets that come up. It's either there, or it attaches to some sort of a feature in that we would have to get in their plan that would, so that in their open space, which is generally about in the middle, that, that if they had an outlet there, that it would connect to that point. I mean, I guess the question is, do you have flexibility there? Was that it, John?
Yeah, it's, it's just, yeah, I mean, either flexible or have we contemplated that at this point?
No, I think it's a good thing. I know it's down there, and we'll look at the plans. I know you said there are plans. We'll look and see where that connection is and make sure it makes sense for crossing.
Yeah, look at their preliminary PD, see how they set up that. There's a walk in there that goes north to the sidewalk. And we may be getting plans from them anyway within the next, you know, for their FDP. But just something that we will, we'll make that work, supposed to put it that way. We'll make that crossing work in a logical manner, as long as you've got some flexibility as to maybe how you might.
Me too. I mean, we just want to make sure we had an entrance off this side and getting into the play area.
Right, because you line up really nicely on the north, they go right up, straight up into the marketplace and in their plaza area and all that's nice.
Exactly. Yeah, it's right in here.
Yeah, very good.
And just like I didn't know about the kite name.
Kite trail?
The kite trail name. I also don't know much about the Town 9 name. And are we in love with the Town 9 name?
I'm actually a little annoyed that it got named.
That's going to change. I mean, it's not, we'll do something probably along the lines of what we did with Autry Park, the same kind of process.
There'll be some name, or name renaming or something at some point.
It just means the nine acres.
It was nine acres, right?
It's not even nine acres. It's only 8.3 or something, but it's like the Richmond 13, Town 9. Yeah, this is, this is though, just to emphasize, this is Cuthbert Field, named after John Cuthbert, former mayor. So that remains Cuthbert Field, but the park would have a full designation.
Yeah, I understood that. I was, one question about the basketball court. What is, what's that surface? Is it just concrete?
Asphalt.
Oh, asphalt, okay.
Yeah, we'll do an asphalt concrete, or I'm sorry, asphalt pad, but we'll do a concrete edge around the asphalt pad. So because, you know, asphalt has a tendency to deteriorate and bleed out on the edges. So we always put a, we call it a concrete mopan. That's what we call it. And it goes around the outside edge of that asphalt. It's nice and contained, easy to maintain.
And another question related to.
It's your asphalt, yeah.
You know, yeah, it's, it'll be four inches. Is that good?
Yeah, of course, good.
Yeah, because there won't be a point of driving on it.
Yes, for weeds and stuff.
Yeah.
But that concrete will help a lot.
Yeah, it will. It does help.
And then just, I was just asking about the location of the slack line.
Yep.
Was that, was it sort of filling in space there or, and I don't, is that, is, is there, is there a change in grade right there as well?
No, there is actually not, which is one of the reasons why it's there. Because we were trying to find a spot that was a little bit out of the way of all the active, just the activity that's going on here in the core area and kept it somewhat flat and also out of views. There's a lot of different, we moved it around quite a bit.
I was just thinking, it's sort of encroaches on otherwise open playfield by having it there, you know, sort of adjacent to the, the east half of the, what, the multipurpose field. And, you know, are you just sort of diminishing the usefulness of the, of the, of this much open, you know, kind of open play, you know, playfield area if you put it there versus where, I don't know where else.
There's trees right now that basically run right here. So those trees are the edge of that field.
Okay, all right. So it is on the other side.
So we work on the other side of it, try not to approach it on that open.
Yeah, okay. No, that's great. Okay. I didn't, I didn't realize that, so.
Important to understand, it's actually not a slack line, but slack line poles. So it's a bring your own slack line.
Exactly.
So they'll be lined there.
Right, it's just poles and then they come out at different distances. And whoever the user is brings out their own slack line and connects it to the pole and uses it, and then takes it with them.
Okay. That's all the questions I had.
Great.
One more. Did you, have you thought about or addressed any more of the concerns that, I don't know if Darryl brought it up, about just making it more obvious that those poles are there so that people don't trip over them or run into them or, you know, just playing? Because they don't stand up, you don't, you don't want them up high because you don't want the slack lines to be put up high, so they're kind of low and.
And that's part of the detail we'll get into more, but we had talked about a reflector tape or something on them so that they are visible for whoever's riding across there, especially in the evenings, you know, they don't see them. So we'll work out that detail so we can go safety.
Other questions? Okay. Item five on the public hearing is actually staff presentation. So I don't know if there's a, I think you've all presented. Is there any more from staff, really, in terms of presentation? We're good? Okay. And questions of staff? I guess we've asked all those questions. Unless you have any? So item seven is the opportunity for anyone in the audience who wishes to. Uh, so, item seven is the opportunity for anyone in the audience who wishes to come in, come forward and speak on behalf of a project or give your opinion or questions, comments. So, if you'd like to come forward, it's your opportunity to do that. Seeing none, um, any final statements from the applicants, which I guess is still the town, so. No? Good, good. Uh, then we will, uh, close the public hearing and move on to just any further discussion. Okay? Start on my right this time.
Uh, nothing in particular, then I think it's a great-looking project, good work on putting this all together.
I think there's been a lot of thought put into this, um, pretty good utilization of park space, the most part. Still don't bother by the east, eastern edge, which I understand why people in original town are anxious to keep that kind of soft in usage. But, uh, I just think the budget might surprise you. I'll make that comment.
Um, yeah, I'd just like to see the ball field be a little bit more accommodating to, and not arguing for, for anything programmed. But, uh, I know we used to just show up at fields with a team. And so, I'd like it to be able to accommodate, being that there's such a lack of fields right now today and no telling when something else may come along. A little more accommodating to, to a team, um, showing up and throwing their bags down and have a bench to sit on and, and running some type of practice. And it's only going to be small kids. No, no bigger team's going to step on 60-foot bases with 185 feet to boulders and foul balls that are going off in the streets. So, I think it's, it's already going to limit itself to a type of play. And I'd just like to see us accommodated a little bit more. Um, and then, uh, I'd like, you know, I'd love to see that boulder. I think we're lacking stuff in town for a certain age group to just go to a park and have something to do. I live right by Purple Park, it's, you know, it's all little kids. Uh, volleyball is very, very active, it's the one thing they do have. Um, the other basketball court, uh, does get used. I don't see how many teenagers, I, I tend to see older kids using it and maybe smaller kids, but I don't see the teenage years.
And adults.
Yeah, I don't really see that high school age kid. And I'd love to have something more for, uh, a few high schooler kids to do. I mean, that rock reminds me of a stone in, uh, in, outside of Park City or outside of Salt Lake that my son took me to that he wanted to climb. And there was a line of people waiting to climb just this piece of granite that was no taller than that and to try different routes on this rock. And I think it'd be great if we could find a way to do that. I'd be even in favor of eliminating a basketball court to do that because I do think it'd be a more important feature, so.
I will say, actually, just in regard to the, to the fee, to the baseball field, is that, um, having, having a place, of course, to drop your equipment and all those things, but also to consider safety of foul balls for a kid who is sitting on a bench or something is, you know, something definitely to consider with, I know, because I coach softball, that there's a real shortage of fields available for softball use. And that, that, the, the number of teams that's coming out of Superior right now is at an all-time high, actually, for, for girls softball. And we're always looking for fields to use. And I suspect you'll see, uh, girls playing on this field quite a bit, given that it has 60-foot base paths. And, and those girls can, can hit the ball over the fence if they're 11 or 12 years old. And they can, they can knock it over that backstop, and they can do some of those things. So, just be aware of, of that, I, I foresee that. Um, and then I, I will make one other comment. I should have asked this as a question, but I'll just make as a comment just for, is the, I love that we're putting in horseshoe pits too. We're just put, putting them as far away from the bathrooms as we possibly could. I mean, for us old guys that like to play horseshoes and drink, you know, drink beer or something. Well, you can, it depends what you put it in. I'm just saying. No, it's, they're, they're just kind of out there by themselves and, you know, I, I know that there's, there are trees and things along there too. And I have, I like the idea of using that, the field, I mean, the whole park for different purposes, right? But, uh, um, it's, uh, I didn't mean that. I didn't mean using the trees, I did not. I just meant there, there are trees around the area. And I know that, that there's, there's reasons why you put it over there, right? It's funny you guys thought of that, I didn't, actually, that's very funny.
Oh, you mean shade?
Yeah, shade, um, anyway, just, they, they just seem like kind of outlier when you're talking about sort of a passive part of the park and now you've put an active activity in that passive part of the park. So, to me, that just looks a little inconsistent. But beyond that, I think it's awesome, I, you know, obviously been waiting for, for, this, this thing has sort of matured over time and to see it, um, you know, come to, to fruition like this is awesome, so. Really cool, thanks.
I really appreciate the variety of, of different activities that have been incorporated into the plan. I think it's, it's a wonderful plan. And it really kind of goes along the theme of the other parks that have been developed in town. It's, I, I hear a lot of comments that we have the best dog park and best this park. So, it's, it's refreshing that a lot of thought goes into it, so I'm excited to use it. Thanks.
Um, I, I think I just did a, many, much of what's been said. I, I do agree, John, that the horseshoe pits, I don't know if they were just closer to the basketball court, might make a little bit more sense. They do seem like they're just off down there in the corner, which seems a little odd. Um, I also like the idea of getting some benches. I hadn't really considered the safety issue, uh, being able to send a kid and say, go to the bench and sit down, you're behind the fence, um, and you're protected, and I think that's, that's extremely important. I also think, as I said earlier, that rock feature is, is critical. Don't think I'm at the point of giving up the basketball court for it, because I think that's an awesome feature for us. But, um, but I do think that rock feature is pretty critical. Um, and I, yeah, you guys, this, you guys just did an awesome job. This is a beautiful park and I think we're all very excited about it.
I think staff did a good job, the staff and the designers have done a good job. I think it looks like there's something for everyone. And, um, I'm hoping it looks as good as, when it's done, it looks as good as it does on paper.
One other question I meant to ask and I forgot.
Public hearing's closed.
I can't ask them a question just on, on the plan detail?
Well, the attorneys will always say the public, public hearing's closed, so.
Okay.
If you want to reopen it, John?
You can, you can put it in the form of a comment.
Yeah, I just, I have a, I have a concern is all. And my concern is the proximity of the, the table tennis concrete slab to the skateboard run. To me, it seems like it's like four or five feet, just looking at the scale, I don't have a scale with me. But that seems, I've seen what they do on those skateboards, and that seems like it might be a little, little close.
Jumping to it.
You get a teenager that's running down there fast and jumping off and loses and takes a tumble right towards the table. So, that, I, I noticed that kind of concern.
Where the rock boulder at the pit?
Yeah. Anyway, that, that proximity, and I hope it's been looked at and, and people feel it's far enough away.
Okay, good, any other, um, discussion? If not, um, we, uh, I would entertain a, a motion. At this point, we are just recommending approval or.
We're making a recommendation with whatever comments you want to have on with that recommendation to the board.
Yeah, possibly. Was there anything in particular that we, in terms of recommendation, that we would want to straw poll right now prior to that, that, that we feel strongly about?
Well, the rock, trying to make sure that, that we, that we all think that that's a pretty important element. Maybe the moving the horseshoe pits closer to the, closer to the park.
And then I'd say, then I'd say the benches too.
I have four from the discussion.
And the benches, the benches, I'm seeing lots ahead.
Let's go down your list and we'll.
I have four, like, recommendations that, to, you know, add benches to the ball field, that's sort of the generic thing for them to just design it. Move the horseshoe pits closer to the basketball court. Rock features are critical elements to keep in the design. And proximity, check the proximity of the skateboard and, or the skateboarder's rails uh, and the table tennis table. Proceed.
Mm-hmm.
How's that?
That's good.
I see all head nods.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so.
Straw poll.
I think we got lots ahead, yeah. So, um, I'd like to move to approve a recommendation to proceed with the Town Nine Park Enhancement Project and pass along the following comments to the board. As were just read by Fred Zachary, that, that.
Read them one more time, yeah.
Read them one more time?
Yep.
Add benches to the ball field, in a, in a, for that's a designer's choice there, but do that. Move the horseshoe pits closer to the basketball court. Rock feature isn't critical element to keep if there's, you know, budget issues. Um, and check the proximity of the skateboard rails and the table tennis ping pong table for safety. The proximity of those two features together. Isn't that what you said?
Yeah, what was three again, sorry?
Three, rock, the rock feature was a good.
Rock feature. The only, and the only other thing too was, Fred, if we could just add a fifth one, which would be the, um, align the entrance, the south entrance with the Remington development.
Yeah.
Got the distance between the end of the skateboard run and that rock feature, it's right at the end of the south walk.
Or we could combine it into one and say, consider, consider the safety of the skateboarding into the key area.
Safety issues related to, to the distances around the, that rail, that skate rail, right?
Probably judge it how fast you can get going down that hill.
Is that, does that sound reasonable?
Did you have another one?
Well, no, we just said, we, we were just modifying the one about the, the proximity to the table, the skate rail. It's really just an overall, more general comment about the safety.
Right.
Distances between, around the, the skate, you know, the intention of having that skate rail close to other, those other amenities right there in the teen park. How's that, modify that instead? Does that work?
Yep.
So, those are, those are five.
Yeah, so.
Condition or recommendations, we'll say. Okay?
Agreed.
Have a motion? Have a second?
Second.
Second, by Commissioner Folsom. Any further discussion? Okay, we'll go to a vote, all in favor of motion, please raise your hand. It's unanimous. Okay, that concludes the item seven, five on the agenda. Thank you very much, appreciate it, thanks for everyone's time too. As you know, we can always take a lot of time on our issues. So, thank you very much. Um, and, and thanks to Prostag and staff and all, and working on that. Putting all that stuff together, those are things, a lot of those amenities, things we've talked about for a long time, so.
Ten years, yeah.
Yeah. Um, item six, staff announcements in this latest?
Uh, yeah, there's a couple. Just in case you're curious, the, the board, uh, is, talked about the green building standard and decided that they wanted to have a, a work session on it. A little bit more detail about how the numbers work and in terms of, you know, whether we're going down to 45% and how the, how, as it goes, as he had modified and as the billing official had, Ernie Kern had modified it and so on. Um, and then also, I think they want a little more information about some of the costs and as it relates to the way some of the other communities are doing it, dealing with this. So, there was some of that information, but I think they want a little bit more. So, they're going to continue to discuss that green building standard stuff that we all worked on here, uh, a few weeks ago. That, and just wanted to go over, uh, a couple, some meetings that are popping up in at least in May and in June. We probably have been looking at the schedules on the website or whatever. But the comp plan discussion, committee workshop number one is this Thursday night, so. So, looking forward to talking about, uh, getting impressions from people and getting that nailed down from anybody and everybody who shows up. So, it'd be nice to go to that. Um, then, in the 23rd of May, and, and I think, I've been told this is now at 7 o'clock, not 6 o'clock.
It is.
Is that the Town Center, uh, com board and the peace planning commission, I mean, uh, have a get-together to talk about the concept as this evolved from the discussion we had, uh, last month. That's on the 23rd, Wednesday night, 7 o'clock. On the 24th of May, we're going to have another meeting with planning commission and the com boards the next night, um, to talk about the market analysis. So, come with your numbers head-on. Because I'm sure there'll be quite a few of those thrown up and, and, so that's the 24th, that'd be at 6. The one on this coming Thursday and day after tomorrow's at 6. One on the 23rd is at 7. And then for June, um, and I'll just repeat these every time we have a meeting. But just to keep you up to date here, the planning commission, we have a comp plan and community meeting on alternatives at 6 o'clock on the 21st. Okay? And then in regards to the Town Center, the next week, uh, the week of the 25th, which is a Monday, we've got, it's a little meetings, we've got 26th at 6 o'clock is a neighborhood meeting regarding the Town Center, which is a more of a community-type meeting. And for them to get some more input into, into the Town Center material that you've been looking at. On the 20, not on the 27th, we have a staff meeting with them, but you don't need to know that. Um, on the 28th, we do the comp plan where we're going to have the planning commission and the com board and look at the alternatives, the draft alternatives that the consultants are coming up with after our community meetings and stuff. So, 26th and 28th and 21th of June. All of those are at 6 o'clock. So, that's June. I'm up for one with July, but, uh, unless you're interested. Um, but we have two meetings, three meetings in July, two in the comp plan and one on Town Center. Town Center is 16th, uh, comp plan on the 19th, and the comp plan on the 30th. 16, 19, 30, July.
So, we've captured, we've captured all those two on the look ahead at this point, Emily?
Yeah, it's on, it'll be on the look ahead.
Yeah.
And at this point, you know, if there's changes, you'll, we'll have, I'll keep you informed of those if we have a meeting or something, you know. Hopefully we're not, I mean, the idea is we're all supposed to stick to the schedule. And, uh, we're going to do our darnedest to do it, so. And the consultants know that that's, that's the marching marters also, so. Hopefully, hopefully these days will stay the same. So, hope to see you on Thursday, that should be interesting, uh, as we get started on trying to get our issues, people's issues and concerns out on the table, about these different other sites around here and how to deal with them. And then the plan, so.
Okay.
That's all I had.
Good, anything else from staff? Okay, all right, good. That's it, thank you.